15, 2022, meeting of the Paducah Independent Board of Education Order. Madam Secretary, would you call a roll, please?
Dr. Atogi?
Here.
Ms. Hancock?
Here.
Ms. Howard?
Here.
Dr. Hudson?
Here.
Dr. Levine?
Here. Have we established a forum?
Yes.
Is there a motion from the board to approve tonight's agenda?
I'll make the motion that we approve tonight's agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Are there any questions from the board? Call a roll, please.
Dr. Atogi?
Yes.
Ms. Hancock?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Dr. Hudson?
Yes.
Dr. Levine?
Yes. If everyone would please rise, I've asked our student board members, Corian Brooks and Jay DeReed, if you would listen to the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on tonight's agenda is item 3.1, which is an opportunity for district equity institute feedback. And this is a presentation of our student board representatives, Ms. Jay DeReed and Mr. Corian Brooks.
Okay, so we're doing the update for the Equity Institute throughout all the Paducah Public School employees classified and certified. And we're going to do an update about the leadership retreat that we did as a student group throughout the summer in Sabres, New York. So today, we're going to talk about the leadership retreat. This trip consisted of members of SEEK, BCRS, AALC, and us, the junior board members. Seek is the Student Equity Advisory Council of BCRS, the Black Hole, and Rosa Society, which is just basically a women empowerment group. And the AALC is the African-American Leadership Club. Throughout this group, it was a no-fund policy. I didn't know about it until I got there, so I was kind of envious. I wanted to go home. But when I got into it and started doing activities and discussion and stuff like that, I really didn't have time to pick up my phone. So it was really beneficial, and I learned a lot of great things. We covered topics regarding diversity, equity, inclusion, belonging, just to unify us as a whole, to learn about different cultural backgrounds, and to learn more things about each other. You might not know what somebody's going through. They might be happy as they'll get out and be going through their worst day. So that's always a great thing to keep in mind. One of the topics that spoke to us as a whole is the YPD discussion. We were all in a group, student land, and we were talking about YPD. It got very sensitive and emotional. It's always good to learn about, like I said, what people go through. You never know. And Ms. Ferris gave us students the autonomy to speak our truth, speak our voice, and just to be ourselves. We had a very strict dress code. We had different shirts for each day to just identify us and the whole to show that we are together. We are together, and we are ourselves, and we belong to each other. And it was fresh bonds and friendship. So I'm friends with people now that I didn't think I could be friends with, and they are the most amazing people that I know. So I'm very thankful that I got to attend this retreat, and it was very beneficial, and I look forward to going to it next year. And here are some pictures from the retreat. These are some of our leaders, Ms. Ferris, Ms. Boyd, and Ms. Asia Rouse. We had this talent show. Here is Anisa Adley. She's giving a yoga talent. So we all got on the ground, did some yoga. It was very fun. Here's on the final day, we had our shirts, "I lead." The shirts are basically just to illustrate that we are leaders. That's why the "I" is lowercase, to just show the main point is leading. That's who we are. For the, up here, I believe that was the second day, we had presented different projects about each other. So for example, I had a poster. It was an All About Me poster, and it was Jada's poster. And I just explained her hobbies and what she liked to do. Let's see. Oh, right here down, right here, we have us. I believe it was like random. And there was the family there for family reunion. And Ms. Ferris went out there and was like, can we talk to you and just explain what we do and why we're here? And we explained, I believe it was the Student Equity Advisory Council, just to give them insight of what we are, what we do, and who we are. There goes Ms. Boyd. She was doing her talent. She was, I don't know what she called it. Jungling with a tennis ball. She was a tennis coach. So I guess that's her talent. And that's about it. The retreat was very beneficial. I recommend everybody just being able to go. It was really fun. Probably a lot of people won't be able to go, but it was really, really, really fun. So.
Thank you.
Okay, so this is the Equity Institute. This was like the day before school started, I believe. And it was for teachers and students. We helped, but it was more of like, you just have to see that everyone's going through something. We did the Equity Walk. It was my first ever Equity Walk. And you just saw like people step back, people step forward. You realize they're going through the same thing as adults. Like you don't normally like see out of eye when going. They helped you do that. You felt equal to everyone else, a teacher, whether you were a teacher in the school, a principal, janitor, it didn't matter. You just felt equal. And we also, old-school spirit. We had like pep rallies, and you know, Paducah Public School, they showed out. And I think Morgan, but knowing, you know, we stepped up a little bit. But it was like a point to see all like the energy there. And just like, it just was a great vibe there that day. And there was a speaker. She talked about, she touched a lot of subjects, and we just had, it was a long speech. She touched on a lot of good subjects, though. And all the breakout sessions, that also, that gives you your comfort zone. We did that at the retreat, and just, you just have to, it helps you be a leader. It helps you get out. You have to get out of your shell. And it's a little like what it sounds like you're breaking out in groups. And it's times when you're going to be with groups, times when you're going to be with yourself. And you can do anything. It's breakout session can be literally anything you can do. Okay. This part, I wasn't there for. I had practice, but I was there to help everyone get to their rooms. And as you see, there's a lot of people. Looks like they had fun. There goes the Equity Walk, and Ms., that was the speaker from New Orleans. And she did really good. This is all rooms, this is the breakout session. And that's really whenever things like get real, you just, it's literally like, it's fun, but it's also like getting out of your comfort zone. So it can be a lot. This is another retreat. This is where we did an off-school course. It was like four people in a group. You had, they put all the supplies in the middle of like the room. You had to run out and get it. And whatever you had, you had to go off support with. It was one that was really fun. Quarantine was really fun. And yeah, like you had pool noodles, you had ropes. It was really fun. You just had to improvise what you had. You had to be creative and just work as a team. It was a good workout.
Okay, so for our next steps for junior board members, we plan to do school visits, visiting the elementary schools, the Paducah Public School, and just get different ideas and implementations to take into consideration to make school more welcoming, to make the school, to make students want to look forward to coming to school. So that's always a good thing. And we plan to meet with school sites and select the students for check-ins throughout the school day. So we're going to have the frisky of like each school and choose a student to meet with and to just gather different ideas and implementations to take on and speak with the board and maybe the, this barn meal regarding the school lunch and et cetera. And we're going to collaborate with the SEEK, with the faculty staff meetings. So basically, just working in collaborations needs to make a better school district regarding diversity, equity, inclusion, belonging. And collaboration with other schools. I was not actually a junior, but I remember when they did this the last year, when they did the collaboration with McCracken County High School after all of the district basketball tournament minutes. So that was really good to come together and, although we are rivals, just to come together, peer-to-peer, and just discuss. That's really a good thing. So we want to do a special thank you to Ms. Shonda Ferris, Ms. Erin Morhead, Ms. Asia Rouse, and Ms. Taylor Boyd for everything that they did regarding the leadership retreat. It was really, 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 really fun. We all had the time of our lives. It was kind of a bit about the phone call secret. I promise, it was so self-playing. And it was six flat at the end of the day. And it was, Ms. Ferris made us sleep really quick. It was really, really, really fun. And we want to thank any sponsors that made this retreat in Equity Institute possible. There's a lot of behind-the-scenes people, and we can't do this without you. So, does anybody have any questions?
Any questions from the board?
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for presenting. I'll look forward to your meeting with students and coming back and talking to us more. So.
Thank you.
Thanks. The next item on our agenda is item 3.2, Student Achievement. Mr. Will Black, Assistant Superintendent.
All right, good evening.
Good evening.
I am going to share some information that we typically share each year regarding AP, Advanced Placement. As you know, Advanced Placement classes and issues of equity within those classes have been a big focus for the district, and it will continue to be. We have, you know, the pandemic has definitely set us back a little bit, but I'm excited about the things that are happening and where we're going. So every year, we track the number of AP tests that are taken. The reason we do that is sometimes you can have a large AP enrollment but not have a lot of kids actually take the test. So we do monitor that, and we want to encourage kids to take the risk and actually take tests, you know, for any AP class. And that's really how, that's how we, you know, get in it. That's definitely. What's strange, and actually threw me for a loop over the weekend, is I noticed the number of tests taken was exactly the same as last year, which was a red flag. I thought maybe there were some errors. In fact, not only was the number of tests taken the same, the number of students who took tests was the same. And so I'm still a little bit in disbelief that that happened randomly. I'm still, I even called the college board to really walk through it with them. I believe it's correct. I think it may just be a random occurrence. But at any rate, you can see the number of tests that are actually taken is down a little bit from the past. And as a result, you know, that's something that we were monitoring and we would like to improve as we move forward. Keep in mind that the number of kids enrolled in AP is actually almost, not quite, but almost half, probably about sixty percent, let's see, probably seventy percent of what it was. Sorry. Yes, it's probably about sixty percent of what it was back in 2019. So the number, total number of kids enrolled in AP dropped due to the pandemic almost by half. So this is our overall pass rate. You can see, over time, and what we, you know, as we were increasing the number of students in AP and increasing the number of minority students in AP, we were able to, even with a larger number of kids, we were maintaining a pretty good pass rate. This was our all-time best, 2019, right before the pandemic.
You mean eighteen?
I'm sorry.
You mean eighteen?
She's nineteen.
Oh, nineteen, okay.
Right here, sorry, nineteen.
Okay.
And the reason there's an asterisk on 2020, that wasn't a normal test. That test was actually taken from home, and they restructured the test just so it could be taken at home. So I always put an asterisk by 2020. I'm not sure how it would really compare. It wasn't the same test. But these were the same tests, and you can see we've dropped. So our pass rate, even in 2021, you know, the same features that we had here in 2019, we, you can see the toll that the pandemic took there. What happened here, though, there's a variety of factors. We did have, we had two new teachers in some APs that are pretty, that have quite a few kids in them. That definitely had an impact there, and I believe that's why you saw that go down just a little bit more. But when you look back, you know, the scores, in many ways, they were very comparable to what happened in the previous year. So again, going back to 2019, you know, we definitely had better, more kids and better scores. But you know, keep in mind that even last year, with Delta and with Omicron, there were some, there were some pretty challenging weeks in there where maybe a teacher would be gone, you know, for COVID, maybe they're quarantined. Kids would be quarantined. There are some factors. I'm not, you know, some of that, I think, is within our control, and some of it, I think, is probably due to the pandemic. So as we move forward, we, and I'm going to kind of shift gears here to this school year, what we really are focused on moving forward is two things. Number one, retaining and increasingly retaining the number of underrepresented students in AP. And then also, really trying to get our scores back up to what they were before the pandemic hit. My goal is to beat 2019 in terms of that pass rate. So you can see here, this is the, is still, you can see that the majority of kids in AP courses are white. We did have an increase in the number of African-Americans. We actually increased by about seven kids, and so about two percent. You can see here African-Americans on the left. What's interesting is our two or more race percentage has kind of steadily gone down. I'm not sure why that is, but we still have a lot of work to do. So we would like, we're going to continue to work on this, and we really do want, I would like to see a larger jump. I would like to, again, go back to 2021, which is our high-water mark for African-Americans. We want to get over twenty percent at least enrolled in the coming year. You can see, we're actually better off with free and reduced lunch than we were last year. Last year, you can see here, we took this dip right here, and now we're, you know, we're back up on, in terms of, at least up ten percent from that. But again, not where it was. It was, we were at fifty percent of our AP students receiving free and reduced lunch as of 2019, 2020. And that's really where we want to be. We want to be, we want the percentage enrolled in AP to represent the percentage in our school overall. And as you can see, we're not there yet. So what are we doing to, in regard to improving equity in AP? We, for years, have had a partnership with an organization called Advanced Kentucky. It works, it's dedicated to making AP accessible to every kid to make sure that we're using the best practices when we teach AP. A lot of it has to do with what we're doing in the classroom with students. Our partnership with the second organization, Year of Equal Opportunity Schools, is really dedicated to recruiting kids into AP. As I said, you know, the number of, for instance, African-Americans, our high-water mark was forty-five African-American students in AP. We're now at twenty-seven. Last year, we were at twenty-one. So we, so in other words, we want to go to twenty-seven, and we want to beat forty-five next year and hopefully get well above the twenty percent mark. And so this year, we did go through the process with Equal Opportunity Schools. It, you know, it just, it wasn't enough in terms of really, you know, moving that needle. In fact, my, what I'm really interested in going to the third bullet point here is engaging with students. I know that our junior board members, as well as the Student Equity Advisory Council, they have both expressed interest in learning more about AP and even have some thoughts on how to make some of the surveys that we give more valid. How to also, I'm hoping to get their ideas on how do we go about recruiting? And how do we go about really, you know, getting kids to see, hey, I can take an AP course. This is absolutely for me. And so we're using the, a really good research-based model that, again, was working. We were getting some good momentum in, you know, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen. We've got to get that back. And so that's going to be our goal over this first year. And when we say retention, that just means, you know, once a kid, this is something that we see too. We see a pattern that a lot of our African-American kids and Hispanic kids, they will try AP sometimes in freshman and sophomore year, and then they no longer stay in an AP course when they get to junior and senior year. Why is that? We need to look into that. You can see it in our enrollment. For some reason, the kids are trying, we may have as many as sixteen of that twenty-seven African-American kids might be in the freshman and sophomore courses. Why are we not retaining them into the junior and senior courses? And then, you know, I think that's an important question we have to ask ourselves. So we're going to be asking that, as well as, you know, really engaging our kids and helping us, you know, get to the bottom of, how do we make AP truly inclusive? Any questions?
Are there any questions from the board?
Nothing to do with finance.
With finance?
Yes.
You know, in fact, we have the same number of AP teachers that we had, you know, in 2019. And there's plenty of room, you know, in the courses that we're talking about, so.
No, I'm talking about the students.
Oh, like, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
To be able to, to be able to afford the AP.
Like the exam?
Yeah.
There are, there are a couple of things that we do to ensure that everybody can take the AP exam. The first is, AP, college board itself actually offers a fee, waiver. In other words, they, or a reduced fee for students who qualify. And then we will, you know, finance should never be an option while a kid can't take a test. So we will cover the remainder, you know, it can be fully covered by the school if necessary. Now, in practice, does everybody know that? I don't know. Like, in other words, I'm willing to, I'm willing to look, I'd love to look into it as we go. What we saw before the pandemic, though, is that as our numbers increased and our numbers of underrepresented students increased, so did the number of underrepresented students taking the test. So we, we didn't really see, in other words, that seemed to go hand-in-hand. When the pandemic hit, we just lost, I mean, it's, we just fell apart. In other words, we lost about half of the kids we had recruited in. And we've got to regain that, you know, that foothold. So I think, I think we're in the right direction. I like the signs that I'm seeing. I just want to see the numbers go up, and I want to see it go up faster. Tell them it's working hard. I got to, you know, I got to give them credit. They've done a lot over the course of the year. Teachers have really worked hard to try to make, you know, try to make improvements in terms of making their classes inclusive. But I think we can do it. I think we can do more.
Are there other questions from the board? Thank you.
Thanks.
The next item on our agenda is item 4.1, which is an opportunity for oral communications from the audience regarding items which are included on tonight's agenda. Generally, we ask people to sign in if they want to speak, but if you didn't sign in, that's okay. We would ask you to come to a podium, give your name. And we want people to try and keep their comments to two minutes. The board typically doesn't respond, but we'll get, tonight, we'll get back to you in terms of your questions. So this is an opportunity for oral communications from the audience regarding items which are included on tonight's agenda. Hearing done, we'll move on to item 4.2. This is an opportunity for oral communications from the audience regarding items which are not included on tonight's agenda.
Dr. Levine?
Sir.
If there are, if, I don't want to interrupt any speakers. If there are no speakers, I did forget to mention something that was outstanding that happened with AP, if you don't mind, I'll.
Oh, yep, that's good, yep. Are there any, anybody who would like to speak on items which are not included on tonight's agenda? Okay, hearing done, we're going to move backwards.
Just sorry. This will take just a second.
The student achievement report.
I failed to mention something that was, was an all-time best, and I want to congratulate a, an individual teacher. We occasionally have an outstanding pass rate, you know, with a smaller class. So maybe a class of, some of the APs get, you know, maybe ten kids in them, or maybe eight kids. But we had a pass rate of ninety-six percent in AP literature, which is a class of, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, twenty-eight or twenty-nine, maybe it was thirty? Is that actually here? Anyway, I think it was, it's in the high twenties. Mr. Wayne Morris had a pass rate of ninety-six percent. Ninety-six percent of the kids in that class made a three or higher. I've never seen that in my own career. Sorry about that.
No, thank you very much. Any other comments from the board? Item 5.0, Consent Agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
I'll make the motion that we approve tonight's consent agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Are there any questions from the board? Any item called Consent Agenda, or anything that they want to move outward to Consent Agenda. Hearing done, call a roll, please.
Dr. Atogi?
Yes.
Ms. Hancock?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Dr. Hudson?
Yes.
Dr. Levine?
Yes. Item 6.1, Tax Rates for 2023 Fiscal Year. The superintendent recommends that the Paducah Board of Education establish a general fund tax rate with the proposed general fund tax levy of eighty-four point six cents on real property and eighty-six point four cents on personal property. The general fund tax levied in fiscal year 2022 was eighty-six point four cents on real property and eighty-six point four cents on personal property and produced revenue of nine million, six hundred ninety-one thousand, nine hundred ninety-three dollars and twenty-six cents. The proposed general fund tax rate of eighty-four point six cents on real property and eighty-six point four cents on personal property is expected to produce ten million, four hundred twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred forty-four dollars and sixty-three cents. Of this amount, two million, seven thousand, nine hundred seven dollars and sixty cents from the personal property. The compensating tax rate for 2023 is eighty-one point four cents on real property and eighty-six point four cents on personal property and is expected to produce ten million, ninety-nine thousand, two dollars and thirty-seven cents. The general areas to which revenue of seven hundred thirty-five thousand, seven hundred fifty-seven dollars and thirty-seven cents above 2022 revenue is to be allocated as follows. Cost of collections, eighteen thousand, five hundred dollars. Instruction, five hundred seventy thousand dollars in maintenance of plant, one hundred thirty-eight thousand, two hundred fifty-one dollars and thirty-seven cents. I know that's a mouthful, but is there a motion? Motion from the board to approve item 6.1, Tax Rates for 2023?
I'll make a motion to approve item 6.1.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Are there any questions from the board or any comments from the superintendent?
I would like to add, we're just blessed to be in this situation that tax rates can go down. That's something I think our public gets excited here. And so when you look at an assessment on a house, a $100,000 house, it'll go 18, it could go down $18 a year. So obviously, $200,000 house would be $36 a year, et cetera. So it's good to see that go in that direction. So very pleased with what, what we're doing. And then also our PDA and assessment, the job they do.
Are there any questions from the board? Any comments from the board? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Dr. Kojie?
Yes.
Ms. Hancock?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Dr. Hudson?
Yes.
Dr. Labin?
Yes.
Item 6.2, change order for BG 20-236. The superintendent recommends that the Paducah Board of Education approve the following change order for the Head Start Preschool Project, BG 22-236. Change order number four reflects an increase of $14,852 for costs associated with changing flazing types and windows and adding six-inch limited scoops to the storefront frames. Change order number five reflects an increase of $6,182.50 for costs associated with painting the steel columns and beams, beams in the multipurpose room and indoor practice facility to Tillman Blue. Change order number six reflects an increase of $1,350 for costs associated with providing materials to paint the steel columns and beams in the multipurpose room and indoor practice facility. Is there a motion from the board to approve item 6.2?
I'll make a motion that we approve item 6.2 change orders to BG 20-236.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Are there any questions from the board?
Dr. Lu, I may add, if you remember back to change order two a couple of months ago, that was a $53,000 savings in change order two. And so still, we, in a project, we put 5% into the contingency. And we were still positive with these change orders. So we still have, project is costing less at this moment than anticipated when we started. So in a good spot with that.
Any other questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Dr. Kojie?
Yes.
Ms. Hancock?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Dr. Hudson?
Yes.
Dr. Labin?
Yes.
Item 6.3, payments to contractors, BG 20-236. The superintendent recommends that the Paducah Board of Education approve the following payments for the Head Start Preschool Project. Payment application number seven for $1,334,99. $82. JRA Architects, $250,691.93. And Baker Farmer Engineering for $1,157.50. And a second payment for $5,767. Is there a motion from the board to approve item 6.3?
I'll make a motion that we approve item 6.3, payments to contractors for the Head Start Preschool Project.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Are there any questions from the board? Call the roll, please.
Dr. Kojie?
Yes.
Ms. Hancock?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Dr. Hudson?
Yes.
Dr. Labin?
Yes.
Item 6.4, payments to contractors, BG 22-155. The superintendent recommends that the Paducah Board of Education approve the payments to Assembly Facility Partners LLC for the Guaranteed Energy Savings Project. This is payment application number four, which is $1,233,132.80. A direct purchase order logging with three in the amount of $332,704.59. Is there a motion from the board to approve item 6.4?
I'll make a motion to approve item 6.4, payments to contractors, BG 22-155.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Are there any questions from the board? Yes, sir.
I have a question regarding item 5.7. I'm aware that the musical trips for the high school is available to music students. However, how do students know that the, the trips are available? How will students know if the trips are available?
I got you. So let's back up on the consent agenda. Okay, we will get back to that in just a second.
Okay, thank you.
This is item 6.4, payments to contractors. Is there a question, any questions from the board regarding item 6.4? There's been a motion and a second. I understand that the Guaranteed Energy Savings Project was on a very tight deadline in order to get that all completed before the start of school. And there was a lot of effort put in to make that happen by the contractors.
There are subcontractors in, in Assembly that have phenomenal job of ensuring that we start school on time. There are other districts in the state of Kentucky not to bring attention to them, but I'm pretty sure it's September, they try to tackle the same project that we did relative to the, the HBAC at a high school about our size. And so there are a few things that we'll continue to do. There's like one unit that's, and the others, we're, we'll be taking care of all right. And then we have our big shoulders that will come in relative to how we won the building in the coming months, and so we're on schedule. It's wonderful. We're blessed that we did not miss the start of school that year. So thank you.
Any other questions from the board or comments? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Dr. Kojie?
Yes.
Ms. Hancock?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Dr. Hudson?
Yes.
Dr. Labin?
Yes.
I'm going to stop here between 6.4 and move back up. Mr. Brooks, you had a question regarding an item listed in the consent agenda, which was 5.7.
Do you want to answer that?
Yeah, please.
I'm aware that the musical trips for the high school are available to the music students. However, how will students know if the other trips are available to them? Or is it just available to a specific previous student?
The makerspace on the road?
Yes. Yes.
Steve, back there.
I'm back here, we'll, we'll answer.
Yep.
Great.
Yep. Dr. Lu, I can answer that for these guys. These, all of these trips listed on here, Coriander are part of the makerspace on the road. So it is not limited, it is not for like Tillman Choir or music groups. It is for anyone, particularly Tillman High School, if it's a high school trip. It's advertised through the makerspace and the Frisky's office. So information will go out prior to, for signups. And there's also lots of scholarship opportunities for students that may not be able to afford those trips. And those scholarships are provided through Frisky's offices and the Paducah Public Schools Foundation, as well as private donations as well.
And if I can add to that, Mr. Julian comes on my announcements and talks about the trips that he's hosted in Paducah Tillman, the school itself, from the activity count, we're paying for some scholarships as well for the students. And they'll be on our announcements. I think last year when they went to Dolphin Island, the science teachers, they promoted that in their class and so forth. So we'll continue doing that the same way.
Thank you.
We also have a, it's not quite in place yet, but any students that sign up for that will be able to be invoiced electronically and payments can be made with a credit card. That's in the works now. We'll wait to receive some training on how to make it happen. So it should be a lot easier than trying to collect cash and checks at every school. Mr. Julian ran around to every school this past year trying to collect all that money. It was a little crazy.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Regal, is it, can they go out to parents for the, I kind of have the same question up here that Coriander did.
Yes, yes. In fact, Mr. Julian asks, asks the Frisky directors at each school to send that information.
To send out information to parents, okay, okay.
So it goes to students, parents, and community members. We have at least one industry partner that's paying for transportation to go to Huntsville to science, space camp, so.
Thank you.
Sure.
Dr. Lu, may I add, the, the vision behind, we started Makerspace on the Road last year. In the Makerspace that we have right out here, it's very physical, science-dominated and technology-dominated. And how do we get experiences to children that might not otherwise receive those? And so the concept of the day trips, elementary, the overnight trip to middle school, and then the lengthy trip to high schools is the opportunity to create new experiences for children. And so through, through the arts, through the school activities, your business with that. And then hopefully biological sciences are coming to something we're working on in partnership. So just how we get children those experiences in our foundation to ensure that that is what happens in our Makerspace here. If the Innovation Hub, the after-school classes in the, in the summer camps has built, is now in the million dollars, to ensure that happens. There's $30,000 every year to ensure it's accessible classes for the folks who live there.
Can't find people to answer your question?
Of course, I didn't have that stock.
Yes. And just out of curiosity, I don't remember the number, but about approximately how many kids took advantage of, were able to take advantage of Makerspace on the road last year? Boo, I don't know the number offhand, but I know that every trip was, was pretty full. I don't know that there were any empty seats on any of them. And, you know, they also had to take into account all this COVID, COVID problems, testing prior to and things like that. So if a spot opened up, we called people to fill those spots every chance we had. So. Thank you for your question. Item 6.5, payment to contractors. This is BG 22-297. The superintendent recommends that the Paducah Board of Education approve the following payments for the Paducah Tillman Artificial Turf Install and Track Resurfaces Project. Payment application number three for $334,210.26 to Hellas Corporation. Baker Farmer Engineering, $2,200. Is there a motion to approve item 6.5?
I'll make a motion that we approve item 6.5, payments to contractors.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Are there any questions from the board?
Yes, the ultimate question, is it going to be done?
Yes, that is my belief at the present moment. Obviously, weather could impact that. But in the last week, relative to the hash marks, Paducah and Williams, Tillman together, the tornado. Dr. Labin and I visited the field last night at 7:30. By 7:15 this morning, the tornado was in the middle of the field. So the PTs, the interlocking PT on the 25th were done today. So we're, we're in a very good spot. The next part would be the infield of the, I forget the name of the substance that goes in there with the sand. So it's looking very good right now. The forecast looks pretty good. So it's been asked numerous times for a lot, but yes, stress is definitely going down each day as you see.
So the tracks are ready now?
The track will be, we have our second home game, which is Graves County, next, not this Friday, but the next Friday. And then we've got three away games with a off week where we don't play. And so we have pushed the track installation back, back to that window because we basically got a month to get the track in at that point. We got, and the issue had bought in, maybe Crowley for getting, so that should be done since June 1st. I assume it's getting ready.
So the bowl games have still.
Yes, sir. We believe that we will be here Friday night at 7 o'clock, hitting the.
Don't show up Friday night, the game's Saturday.
Saturday.
Let the team show up Saturday.
We're tailgating Friday.
Saturday, the 20th.
Are there any other questions from the board regarding 6.5? There's been a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Dr. Kojie?
Yes.
Ms. Hancock?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Dr. Hudson?
Yes.
Dr. Labin?
Yes.
Item 6.6, BG 4, closeout document, Paducah Innovation Hub, BG 17-179. The superintendent recommends that the Paducah Board of Education approve the BG 4 closeout form for the Paducah Innovation Hub, which is BG 17-179. Is there a motion from the board regarding item 6.6?
I'll make a motion we approve item 6.6, closeout document.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Are there any questions from the board? Call the roll, please.
Dr. Kojie?
Yes.
Ms. Hancock?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Dr. Hudson?
Yes.
Dr. Labin?
Yes.
Item 6.7, amendment to Board Policy, second reading. The superintendent recommends that the Paducah Board of Education receive for second reading and approval of the amendments to Board Policy 03.122 and 03.222 to include the observance of Juneteenth holiday. Is there a motion from the board regarding item 6.7?
I'll make a motion we approve item 6.7, amendment to Board Policy, second reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Are there any questions from the board? Call the roll, please.
Dr. Kojie?
Yes.
Ms. Hancock?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Dr. Hudson?
Yes.
Dr. Labin?
Yes.
Item 6.8, emergency COVID days. The superintendent recommends that the Paducah Board of Education approve 10 paid COVID emergency days for the 2022, 2023 school year. The COVID emergency days can be used for family illness due to COVID isolations and quarantines as defined in Board Policies 03.1232 and 03.2332. Is there a motion to approve item 6.8?
I make a motion, we approve item 6.8, emergency COVID days.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Are there any questions from the board? Call the roll, please.
Dr. Kojie?
Yes.
Ms. Hancock?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Dr. Hudson?
Yes.
Dr. Labin?
Yes.
Item 6.9, new supplemental position, OSHA safety director. The superintendent recommends that the Paducah Board of Education approve the OSHA safety director position and set a fundamental value of supplemental for the work outlined in the job description. Is there a motion to approve item 6.9?
I make a motion we approve, we approve item 6.9.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Are there any questions from the board? Call the roll, please.
Dr. Kojie?
Yes.
Ms. Hancock?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Dr. Hudson?
Yes.
Dr. Labin?
Yes.
I believe we have a need going to executive session regarding personnel, property, and potential litigation. Is there a motion from the board to adjourn into executive session?
So.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any questions from the board? Call the roll, please.
Dr. Kojie?
Yes.
Ms. Hancock?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Dr. Labin?
Yes.
Thank you for coming.